Alright, I think we're going to get started with this little past six thirty. So I wanted to welcome everyone who are going to be here. I'm glad there was a little confusion at the end. I know among us about where this meeting was taking place, but I'm glad to say everybody found this, so that's great. I want to remind the building committee of their charge. And the building committee is charged with reviewing the needs assessment report, determining priorities, determining the size and scope of the future of building on, and then making recommendations to the board. So just remind us that this is the charge of this committee. So I think we'll start with introductions and we'll do the committee first and then our visitors next. So I'm Dawn Wolf from I'm the superintendent of schools.
I'm Amy Jackson, who is resident.
Terry Schwartz, who's the leadership director.
Kennedy Ferentz, mom of a first grader.
Caitlin Ramsey, middle school candidate.
Elizabeth Seifert, school board.
Erin Taylor, school nurse, elementary school.
Heather Dastert, town manager.
Jamie Gardner, from the town council.
Shizan Zalpah, as a parent.
Tim Thompson, citizen.
L.D., special services director.
Kathy Stager, the director of Christian Learning.
Marcy Beattie, school business manager.
Shep Shet, high school principal.
Jason Lynn Reed, school pond coach.
Sarah Blythe, who has schools.
How do you do, or is school board?
Heather Alm, Heather Alm, Heather Alm, where are school boards?
Peter Sizito, school administration.
Steve Price, middle school teacher.
DJ Nelson, parent of a resident.
Abdul Sashi, a major school board member.
Troy Smith, middle school.
Um, Mary Ann, do you want to introduce yourself?
Mary Ann Lynch, citizen.
Um, if everybody's too squished over there, we could have a little bit of room, but if anybody wants to move. And you guys want to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. I recognize me and the rest of us, but it was going on. I'm James Hebert, project manager and will be company engineer.
Caitlin, who will be company engineer?
Angela, Scott Simon.
Officer, what's Scott's name, right?
And our other guests? Melissa Gadd, writer with Forecaster.
Derek Converse, parent.
Welcome, everyone. And we're going to turn this over to Dave and Carol.
Welcome. Thank you so much. First off, Happy New Year, everyone. It's been a, trying to find a, maybe I can stand over here. I'll necessarily stand right over your folks. So last time, what we want to do is since we had weather issues back in December and with the holiday and everything else, it's definitely appropriate to just have a quick update, like the introduction as well as an update of where we started and here we are, especially we have a couple of new folks here tonight. So if you go back in time, back to August and the fall of 2017, we were helping discuss architects. We were hired to study the people's in school buildings, assess the remaining lifespan, do an overall feasibility and need assessment, current state of the buildings, just kind of go through and use our engineering talents and architectural talents to sort of gauge and what work needs to be done to sort of bring the schools back up to a modern, modern energy code and other addressing other issues that folks are having. Between the fall of 2017 and spring of 2018, since we were hired in the middle of the school year, obviously our services weren't something I was necessarily budgeted for. So with the budgeted resources available, we conducted specific site analysis and surveys and looked at specific areas within each of the schools working within superintendent time. And then February 2019, we were asked to provide a proposal for a full needs assessment to go through all of the schools, really go through, pull up, push above the ceiling tiles, see what's above there, make a look, put together a whole project that's very functional and useful for you folks going forward for addressing critical path items. In June of 2019, the fund was approved. We began work on the needs assessment report, which we completed in 2019. Included in that, we submitted 12 applications. Again, thanks to Dawn and Marsha for letting us know about the school revolving renovation fund. 12 applications totaling $988,000 in change to the state of May for approval to try to address certain very specific items that are required by the state. We couldn't really go for the large ones. They all had to be $1 million or less or so. And then between the fall of 2019 and winter of 2020, here we are where we've been reviewing needs assessment and we're talking about sort of what are the next steps and what's the path forward here. And when we'd like to start, when our presentation was a question that was raised last time that we had met, and what are sort of the big differences between new construction and renovation in place? Would that, would that, Caitlin, speak to, speak to that topic?
Can everybody hear me from?
They're gonna just really speak up in these rooms.
Okay. Can you hear me across the room? Great. The, so when we first were hired, we came on, looked at the schools, looked at the grounds, took everything into account, spoke to the teachers, did some interviews with the manager. They provided a lot of information. And we have looked at, who, oh, we have looked at renovation of the existing buildings versus new construction. I wanted to go through some of the pluses and minuses of each one. Starting with renovation, based on the way the schools are situated, in order to renovate any of the schools, you basically have to move the students out into temporary trailers or temporary schools, rent another space. We did actually do a somewhat exhaustive study of whether or not if you could do a three-month summer plan, turn various parts of the school over to the contractor for three months of the summer. Give them the school, take it back. Give them the school, take it back. When you have, what happens is contractors have mobilization, demobilization costs, and those were added up. They leave things partially done, have to pick them up later on. We didn't think that was a big advantage. Another part of the renovation, usually if we were to renovate the schools, is we would still lose part of the athletic fields to contractor laydown space. When you hire a contractor to come do work for you, whether it's in your yard or it's a big commercial project, they need laydown space. If we force them to rent that or haul in or have staging yards that are way off-site, it just drives up the cost. So it would still be better to have on an athletic field. The HVAC system, Perry did a wonderful job a couple of meetings ago talking about the design of these masonry, masonry buildings where the slab is exposed. So if you're sitting next to the edge of any of the perimeter parts of these schools, you're going to be uncomfortably cold at the bottom, even if there's wall heat, you know, radiant heat on the wall pumping up towards you or blowing heat down on you. How does that manifest itself? Well, if you're uncomfortable in your work environment or in your running environment, you're only going to pay attention for about 20 minutes max, and then you're going to just be too uncomfortable being cold. And you're, it's, you're going to be more concentrating on how do I get warm or how do I get not warmed, you know, cooled off. So HVAC would not be completely fixed as far as HVAC even in the renovation project. The first bullet there, unanticipated discoveries in the construction world with all that unforeseen conditions, no matter how many ceiling tiles we pulled up, no matter how much we've tried to look and find everything, there are things behind the walls of every single building, whether it's your home or my home or a commercial building. And those drive up the cost. And so what happens is when we're doing planning for a major renovation, the contingencies are higher. When a contingency is high, you get less built because you're waiting for those unforeseen things to happen. And there are everything from, wow, we thought we were going to reuse these heaters, they're too corroded, the pipes are too filled with, we cut into the pipes, the water was too hard, and now we have to replace all this pipe. There's a contingency for that. And that doesn't translate itself into rebuilding. It translates into itself, itself into paying a contractor to fix something that we didn't see. One of the main things that we talked about, both with you folks and in our group, with the architects and engineers, is the buildings are, especially the pond boat and middle school are quite old. To do what's necessary to do significant, to make the security concerns go away would be a lot of work that most likely if you're going to do something major to these buildings in the next few years, which we're recommending, that would be throwing good money out the bag. We could fix it, we can create the security boundaries that are needed. Not a lot of that would be saved as you move ahead. Some they can, depending on the direction they choose. With the new construction, in the way that we foresee it happening, there would not be any temporary teaching facilities required, so no trailers. We've come up with a phased plan for recommending where open field would be used to just to create a building, a part of the new school, move students into that, tear down what's there, build a new school there, combine it together, and the school, the students are always in a classroom and meant to teaching. Is yet, are the athletics folks here tonight, or? We're still, we're still showing the athletics field going away in the, in the area directly adjacent to the middle school. We do believe that there's enough site and grounds here to break some of that back. We don't know in what form yet, but. And yeah, and the construction would be phased and minimize school disruption. There's so much construction would be going on while school is in session. That can be minimized, minimized, there's ways to do that. We've had really good success having contractors, you know, do most of their demolition and the really loud stuff after, say, two o'clock in the afternoon and do more of the quiet, quiet type work in the morning. It does work, and we've done it ourselves at our company, we've had the luxury of it. So you can phase that so that you can be teaching and have your construction going. Last slide. New constructions, I'm going to cover this a little bit later with the absolute energy, but the new construction allows for maximum energy savings, taking advantage of all the sustainability and all the new construction techniques to maximize, keep it even and hold out and vice versa in the summer. Scott Sun stood up, I think Lewis, at the last meeting or the meeting before, and talked about new teaching methods, higher ceilings that are being, more flexible spaces that are required. A new, a new construction is going to give you that, much more teaching flexibility. And then, of course, the security concerns. A new school's going to have all of the new security that all the new schools have these days in the early morning.
I want to sort of touch on what you just referenced, Scott's previous comments. Here we have a situation where this building has been built over six different phases, and to a certain degree, you've adapted your teachings to this space. This is an opportunity to adapt your space to your teaching method. You can have a purpose-built facility that is designed for your specific teaching philosophy. It's a great opportunity to just rethink the school and how it works. So that's one of the major benefits of the new construction.
So would that one sort of transition more of the sound side, Matt, we're willing to talk about sort of his bonding history with the town, is there a?
So, I'm just, what we have here is, one of the larger questions that's come up numerous times is, what's the ability to, you know, options that do come from, come from all these areas that they're considering, first reconstruction, renovation, head size, but it all comes down to how much is actually, is the appetite for the town to take on that, the volunteer's ability to pay, how long they want to be there for. So what I did was I took the chance, I took the opportunity to speak with our gentleman, this is the Jordan of Bond Syndication, Morrison, Cat, not Boston, and I asked him that I reviewed our most recent bond issuance. And so what we have here is kind of, this is a, especially it kind of breaks down what our current bond, bond and debt situation is, as well as there are some legal parameters that we need to consider. So what we'll see, I guess a couple of things I want to lay out first. There are statutory limits, there are legal limits that have been set by the state to the amount of debt that a town can take on when it comes to doing projects. What you see on this one here, it comes down to equalized state valuation. So what we have here, this is our advanced state valuation over the years, starting in 2012 through 16, and then fast forward to today, 2020. Our current state valuation is $2.125 billion. So the state has set a limit, the hall of debt that a town can take, you can exceed, you cannot exceed 15%. So that's, that's your ceiling. What does that mean as far as real numbers? It means that the town can only see $318,780 in debt, bond and debt. Where are we at now? Currently, school, town, sewer debt, we're $15,700 in debt. That is roughly three-quarters of 1% of what our state equalized valuation is. So three-quarters of 1% of the $2.125 billion. For per capita, there's another way to look at it. So for the 9,015, which is our last, last census number, we have per capita debt of $1,742 debt. So that's kind of our baseline where we're at now. There is some debt that's expiring, I'll touch on that shortly. But when we're looking at some of the statutory legal requirements, legal limits, they also have some language waiting specifically to school debt, school related debt. The limit by the statute is 10% of its last state evaluation. So obviously you take 10% of the 2.125, so for school related debt, you can't exceed $212 million in debt. Our current school debt service, or 10% there. Per capita, this is Will Chilton, for the $318 million, it's $35,361. For the 212, it's $23,574. Obviously, that's either one of those approaches, because the element of taking all your equity out of your house, taking your kids' college fund, taking all of their, part of their money, putting it off the center of the table. That's, and there's a reason why they have to let it, because it's not, this is responsible. Now, our current school debt service is very attractive, we're two-tenths of 1%. Four million, $322,200, $200 in current debt, or $479 per capita. Our current town, town debt and sewer debt service, now we do include sewer here because it is bonded debt, okay? The sewer debt service is pretty much paid for by the sewer, sewer fees that the users pay on a, you know, a monthly basis, but still it's included in there. But we're still looking at just under six-tenths of 1% as our current town's sewer debt, or $1,262 per capita. Now, speaking with Joe, when he goes out and syndicates these on a daily basis, what's an acceptable amount to the market? So when they are looking to syndicate these bonds and to find out allocating risk and keep, because we have this type of position here, we've done very well for a long time, had a AAA, a 4A, and a AA1 lottery. We are among the best, not the best in the state as far as risk, government, per capita. Comes down to our debt related to where we're at, our ability to pay. So looking at, a couple of things that, you know, looking at Joe, he had a couple of areas he looked at, $3,000, $4,000 range is what they're looking at, is what the market may find acceptable to a town, as well as what generally they found has been acceptable to the public, as far as what they may support through a valid initiative. As well as 2%, if you look at in relationship to equalized state valuation. Those are kind of the areas that folks seem to see will improve historically. So that would be at this point at $3,000 per capita, you're looking at about $27 million in bonded debt. So that would give us, if you look at our current debt service, 15.7 subtracting from the 27, gives you about $12 million right now on the low end, you know, $2,000. $36,000, I'm sorry, $36 million on the higher end, like $4,000 per capita. So that gives you about $21 million in gap right now. And then if you look at the 2%, as another estimating number to use, you're looking at about $42.5 million as far as almost your ceiling as to where you want to be. So we're buying about $27 million right now, or $4,714 per capita. So then, right now, this is kind of a bigger picture of the smaller picture you just saw. Really, it's one of the said, so you look at your total debt limit, that one again is about $318 from the schools, you're looking at 212 is the, is the, is the ceiling. Current town and sewer is 4.3, and current school is 4.4.3. And then looking at our per capita, so we have the $479 currently for the school, and $1,262 on the town side. And then the $4,714 would be that, that, that 2% election, you know, as far as what the market may find, I'm sorry. Now, looking at some, what we have done in future.
I have a question, everybody's going along.
Yeah, you can.
Moving back to the last slide, this slide, trying to understand this. So the town, would you spend what you put out as the maximum, $42 million? We would be increasing the debt per capita of 10 fold, from $479 to $4,000.
Good question. That would be.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
Sure. About, about three and a half times, well, per capita. Right now, our per capita total is $1,742, so it's the fours, the nine, the four, six, two.
Okay, so three times, thank you.
It's about three and a half times.
Yes, appreciate that.
For sure. And so, so what we've done in the past, this, these are our current bonds we have out now. Cool Public Works goes back to 1999, we have 22899 right now. Some of these are quickly going to be retired. Cool Public Works, Public Safety, Miss Malias, those, the community center renovation, do come off in fairly short order from, from the town's books. They come out on 20 years. Some of them were refinanced back in about halfway through, about 10 years in, to get a better rate than was built for town. So that debt is coming off. So over the next couple of years, the amount that the town will be able to, as long as you think about that 42 number versus 15, that 27 difference between the two starts to grow. So over time, you start to be able to have a little bit more capacity if you're working to do that. But historically, what the town has done is invested very well in the infrastructure. We have Cool Public Works, we have Random Public Works facility, or near to most, the Public Safety Building is also, goes back to my first year here. Community center renovation happened thereafter. Did do some infrastructure improvement that took place back in 2006. And then town center roads, there's some additional investment that have taken place. Most recently, we're working at TML, or the most recent bond initiative that took place when it comes from our libraries, and then the Cool and Recycling Center took place three years ago. So all those that, oh, please, hold on, I'm looking at, sorry. The one, the one area that we're looking at, the existing debt, we do have some, but it is coming off, the debt that we do have that will go on for a longer time beyond that. It's got, maybe a lot of longer windows that we do still have operating, but they're also more, so, so lending environment is still positive as far as that goes, really interesting dynamic that they have in play. But hopefully this gives you a better picture as to what, you know, when you're looking at the capacity of the town, I know, you know, it may separate the discussion as far as what the community decides to make for recommendations as far as the options that are there. So happy to answer any more questions or others come up. Don't understand, gave me an email, I'll do the same response to it. I think probably as a knowledge distributed to, to what we, also, I don't know, probably the issue.
Is the town anticipating any new initiatives should take into consideration in town side?
The other funding items that we have, the big two items probably Shore Road is in the near, is in the near future as far as the larger, the larger thing. We have done it in the past two years, the past three years, we've done two different needs purchase agreements in, in 1.2, 1.5, $100 range. Those retired real quickly, so those are five years or less, one of which has about two years after this year, but who are supposed to retire here quickly, and those are those that are built in the tax rate. So still putting a higher impact on either one of the tax people, and that's trying to help those be taken for as, as they go by the years.
These amounts here, those are, those were the original amounts that they were issued there? Those aren't matured balances?
No, those aren't matured balances. And we have to share that. I don't know. Yeah, those are all, those are all available now.
And so one of the maturities of these, of this debt typically, is it five years, is it 10 years, is it 20?
Most of those are 20s. Twenty, yeah, most of those are 20s. And then the, the first sentence, I'm probably, I'm mostly, you know, it's a 20-year box. And then the, a couple of different times that I do that, times they've refinanced that within the years. So with that, a couple of different times over the past two years, we're actually finding that we have refinanced that, but it hasn't made sense. Most people, which in town, who's a lot of, so, the smaller ones, we can say, refinancing that existing, so it doesn't, because, no, it's a, no, it's a 79, I think.
Did I tell you that you said, based on, we're only staying in the state, we're well, not only well below, but one of the highest mining in the state in terms of staying below our limitations, if not Niasse?
Good, you're very well.
Good.
Your, 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 Yeah, I think that's something, I think that's something that helps us a lot as well. And all that comes into play, we, we're probably great on it, that helps, we pay our bills, you don't have a lot of debt, you know, all those come into play that help us, as Council Gardens said, it's, we would have almost like a diamond credit score, so. But you're willing to, we have to change that at all, we'd have to pay, you know, because what we've done historically, that's why we, we don't rate it, send it out, we need to, in terms of other towns that are, that don't have a much.
Do you have any sense of what we have as household pays, poor household pays to, to finance the debt?
Right now, we have? Yeah, it's, uh, is it the seventeen hundred bucks, basically, seventeen hundred, yeah, yeah. It's, that's, that's pretty good, yeah, right, we broke out. So, if you, if that break up, and I, I have to, I have to, you know, answer it.
So, I would love to look at the low hanging fruit in this, and if the first grade are bound to be paid off, or paid off sometime in the next year or two, as if we have a certain amount of debt service in the budget, do you have a sense of how much that borrowing, that debt service would support, let's say, green hats and interest?
Would we have twenty, twenty-seven million, or?
No, what I'm trying to think about is you've got three projects that are about to be paid off, that debt service is already in the budget, so that's the sort of low hanging fruit in the sense that you could lace that with borrowing, and it, it says zero impact to taxpayers? This is already in your tax bill, so I'm trying to figure out first what the low hanging fruit is here?
So, over the next, over the next two years, roughly, about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars combined, we'll be dropping off of our debt service. So, this year, for instance, we made the last payment on, on the Cool Public Works bond, so that's gonna take two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, the debt service off. And then, next year's budget, we're looking at dropping two hundred and five thousand, and then, two years out, we're looking at community services, it's gonna drop about seventy-eight thousand dollars off, so that, that's, that's the bottom for the apples right there.
So, shoot some quick math that might support nine million a borrow?
Probably.
No impact.
Over the three years, yeah.
It'll be helped to that, Matt, to do it like that.
Kind of like when the county did the citizen over.
Yeah.
At the same time, they dropped the debt, they dropped the bond from the, from the jail, came out at the same time, and then we did the citizen over. So, we'll look back to the taxes.
And that's one of the things we did with some of the last little borrowing was as early projects were paid off and kind of feathered into tax.
And that, that, here you, you're willing to follow us to pace things, and as far as improvements, where you can look at that, you paste that in as your debt was retired based on the improvements that are.
Can you go back to your first slide? Sorry. So, our bottom says forty-two and a half million, that's a two percent, and our current debt's at fifteen point seven, so you're saying that borrowing, you can bond it today, we potentially bond up to twenty-seven million.
If you wanted to stay at that forty-two, five, thirty?
Right, that's your two percent threshold. So, our bond, so if we say okay, we're gonna bond today over five hundred and seventy-seven million dollars, and out by this. Thanks, Matt. Make sure, not to be hesitant. We love graphics so much, we took, we took that data, and we'll filter that here, imagine that, and then we took that, so. All these, anything beyond twenty-twenty, we just gotta took a step, a guess at, of the things that we normally pay for throughout the course of, you know, roads, super upgrades, we may have a big town building, general town building upgrades, or public safety facilities, we put a pond, a little school building, high school renovation there as well, and then later on, part of the line, high school building, new high school building, part of that, these laws represent that throughout the course of decades that you operate as a municipality, that comes, that goes, work on your projects, upgrade your buildings, after time, you can be upgraded in place. And on this one, I'd like to, Marshall, should we?
Oh, yes.
Andy, you had a question about who, perhaps, do we fill, or is that fill that, about upcoming projects? So, Matt just went through and listed, you know, a likely project that will require bonding. I would just say too, that the other thing to be aware of is, while, while not a bonded expense, the town has been a likely incurred sometime in the next, can't say exactly how many years, but in the relative near future, we've been talking for a while at council level about the need to overhaul delivery of service for rescue and fire safety, because the current model is not a long-term sustainable model with induction, staff, volunteers. So, while that's not something that we could bond for, it's a, it's a known item that's coming down the pipe, it's gonna have impact to the taxpayers. So, I think, while it's important to look at the bonded, bonding expenses too, whether it's on the school side or on the town side, things that are known entities like that should also be back there. And, Marshall, are you free to talk about sort of the state, correct state of funding this year?
So, the first point, I'll talk about, the first point I'd care about the state's support for funding, can everybody hear me open my projector loudly enough?
You're perfect.
Oh, yeah. So, I wanted to talk about this first, there was an article, thank you for sharing, Marianne, this weekend, that touched a little bit on this, and I don't know if y'all had a chance to read that, yet, the article states that pine tree watch reports that in the last two decades, districts have sought help with nearly two hundred and sixty of the state's six hundred or so buildings, and only seventy-five new schools have been approved, including just nineteen since two thousand and ten. So, I wanted to talk about this a little bit. When we went to, we met with the state director for major capital construction in November, and Ann Pennett indicated at this time, they are closed for applications for this type of process at this time. However, she said, keep your eyes open, at any time the state budget can release funds, the federal government can release these funds, more than likely, it will be a few years, but you never know, so we're to keep our eyes open. But right now, for applying for any major capital money, the applicant process is closed. And we, we are still in the process, we'll know February first, you all remember that part, that we have six projects that are being seriously considered, but they're not for major renovations, but it would be six projects, it would be rate, you know, thirty percent forgiveness rate. But I wanted to also talk about the neighborhood, Susanna did great research, and I wanted to review some of that through your presentation, just some facts from our surrounding schools. So, our neighborhood school, South Portland, did receive fifty-nine million from the state recently, that, for a sixty-nine million dollar project. Westbrook completed in two thousand and ten a twenty-nine million dollar project on the middle school with ninety percent that was state funded. Felman completed construction in two thousand and eleven on a new green elementary school for thirty-seven point seven million dollars, that was eighty-three percent state funded. And the, the Felman taxpayers for that project paid six million dollars to complete it. So, you know, good news and bad news, as far as the state funding goes.
Thank you, Marshall, we appreciate that. So, again, talking at a high level, we're just gonna break down to the low level a little bit, and then the next one. Julia here is gonna talk about sort of square footage analysis of all the schools here on campus.
I'm trying to make it large enough so that you can see that, like, maybe you can't see it, but it's a little hard to see. We did take, like, a quick fact, and trying to look at the pragmatic comparisons between the high school and the elementary school, middle school, co-building, just to answer the question, you know, we couldn't determine if it's a purpose completely or a number of people, but essentially, just breaking it down into six categories, and admin support, classroom, to name him, media center, library, cafeteria, and then auditorium. The elementary, middle school building is shown in blue, the high school is shown in orange. So, as far as administrative supports, they're fairly similar. We were surprised to find that the elementary, middle school actually had a significantly higher amount of square footage program dedicated to classroom space at almost fifty-seven thousand, this is fifty-six thousand seven hundred, and the high school was at forty-seven, thirty-four, three hundred and forty, sorry. The gym was actually fairly comparable, the space assigned to media center or library, depending on the building, there are whole different things, was fairly comparable. Cafeteria, this one was a little, is a little bit misleading, because of course, the elementary middle school, the cafeteria and the auditorium are combined into one thing, but, so we don't actually have a dedicated auditorium space here. So, this is actually where the high school really has a significant amount of square footage, has completely separate dedicated space on that. So, just to give you a sense of where the total square footage, of course, you could stand compared to the main state permanent education guidelines, if you were designed from scratch today, the elementary, middle school came out to two hundred and four, the high school came out to three hundred and eleven. And one of the reasons for that, despite the fact that in some ways, it, it seems like it would be opposite compared to the actual totals for footage of the buildings, but then it comes down to the per student, and the ratios are actually different. So, the N D O E guideline for elementary school students equates to one hundred and forty square feet per student, and for high school is one hundred and eighty-five square feet per student. So, these are baseline recommendations. You may think we're doing really well because our, per student's square footage is significantly higher, but the reality is that these figures don't actually count for efficiency of design and layout. And so, we've heard a lot from faculty and so forth, that a lot of the spaces don't actually feel like they work very well, even though from a number standpoint, it looks like you're doing really well for a square foot, per student, or two.
Is there anyone in the room that can remind me the number of students per school? It's five, I mean, I, I think my guess is, and what I understand is, it's a hundred, a hundred and thirty, or forty, thirty?
It's about that.
So, the elementary and middle school would be two-thirds of the school population already, right? So, you're saying that here?
Yeah.
And you looked in the previous slide, you can see how it's a little on that, right? They account for a lot less than two, there's not a two-thirds, or a third difference between this.
And, and part of that is because between different age groups, the required division of the actual square footage that you build a lot to a different number of students is actually different. Does that make sense?
Two hundred and fifty.
Yes.
I'm assuming that this is somewhat in response to my question of, is it actually feasible to repurpose the high school? I had already guessed it wasn't, and so I was, I think that comparing around what you're showing would be useful to indicate which is, it isn't?
Yes.
There's been a lot of questions about square footage and right sizing, and there's much other ways to say it, and I think the general feeling of our team is that if you redesigned the schools new, there would be, there would be some conservation of space. We're not quite sure how much, but we do believe that the, the overall square footage would probably come down for those schools. It's very early, it's very early in the process to figure out what that might be, but this shows, shows you that you have a lot of space, and remind, and, and as a reminder, the future energy piece is coming up, is every square foot we save on, on a new design, it's just a square foot we don't have to heat, the pair doesn't have to take care of.
I have a case in point, in this facility, there are portions of the buildings that are unusable, we counted them in the square footage, but they can't be occupied for current reasons.
Going forward, yeah, with more of the sustainability thing, with new design, there's also a question previously about new design methods, building interiors, and so talk about that a little bit, or you can tell us.
So, sustainability is a really broad topic, but we wanted to sort of give you an introduction of what the possibilities would be for new construction, and we divided this into six different categories, and those six different categories sort of correspond to LEED certification. The first is location and transportation, you know, basic principles like positioning buildings next to public transport, you know, electric charging stations and so forth, sustainable sites that use native materials and are low impact development methods, to the next slide. And then, the category is water efficiency, taking the advantage of rainwater harvesting and using that rainwater for flushing and for irrigation, incorporating low flow toilets that conserves water. The next category is material resources, you know, during the construction process, incorporating recycling, but also using recycled materials and rapidly renewable materials in the new construction. And the next one, the next category, and the major one, is energy and atmosphere, keeping, you know, being very mindful, as we've emphasized in the past, high performance envelopes, that includes windows, passive heating and cooling, natural ventilation, high efficiency H K A C, and also the opportunity for rooftop TV and power generation. And then, the final category was just the indoor air quality. We wanna make spaces that are comfortable for the users, and that includes, you know, the indoor air quality, the quality of the acoustics, the light quality, incorporates daylight harvesting, and being very mindful of each and every product that goes into the building and the off gassing properties, so you avoid any sort of sick presence syndrome. So, that sort of broadens the progress, those sustainability issues and the opportunities to address each one of those categories in construction.
And Diane, I thought, also, to address one of the questions that's come up in the past, is just a comparison of building envelope and insulation values for your existing building, in orange, baseline code compliant requirements for, for new construction today, and then, what you would call high performance buildings, where you would really start to see the maximum return on sort of a balance between the efficiency of your mechanical systems and your operations cost and payback, in having reduced operations costs over a longer life cycle of the building, balancing, you know, a somewhat higher initial upfront construction cost. So, you can see here, this slab assembly is sort of the most drastic disparity, going from R twenty for high performance, roughly R ten for code compliant, and then, and this is sort of an approximation, knowing that there is a, there are a variety of current building assembly types, but there would be estimation, a significant number of them actually were not insulated as original slab upgrade construction, so you're actually in some places seeing, as close to the comment Perry shared earlier, in terms of, you know, literally feeling cold air coming through the edge of the slab of the perimeter of your building, it's being really low, it's point six. So, moving to wall assembly, we look to have an R forty for high performance buildings. There are a few different ways of achieving per code requirement, but it would be a combined of R thirteen, continuous additional exterior layer, seven point five, so that puts you correctly twenty-three point four. And then, we estimate your average current wall assembly isn't actually as drastically bad, but you're probably looking at best case scenario at R fourteen, and that also doesn't count any, this doesn't account for air tightness, for longer insulation, et cetera, which further reduces the actual efficacy of these. Going to roof assembly, and this actually counts for a significant amount of heat retention in buildings, senior buildings, we, we like to target R sixty, code requires R thirty, continuous insulation of larger roof assembly and structure, so that means everything is encapsulated, and we anticipate that probably best case scenario, the majority of these buildings are seen twelve point five. And that also goes back to a conversation we brought up about, one of the challenges, it's, it's not as easy as simply increasing the insulation on your existing roofs, because that will change literally your snowmelt and then literally the load that those receive, and so a lot of the required structural upgrade. And then lastly, looking at weight荷values, we, in high performance buildings, like to target U point two or better, code general compliance is anywhere from point three six to point four three, and we anticipate that your existing buildings are probably in the neighborhood of point five five, point six five, so, again, hopefully this illustrates with some clarity, even though the numbers are maybe a little bit hard to process in terms of what they really equate to, the disparity between high performance buildings, what would be code compliant, you know, in terms of having discussions, what would it take to make the existing buildings, you know, here or in here?
What, what is crazy?
Crazy would be the windows, oh, skylights.
Any kind of glass?
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful, just to understand what it would take to get our system goes to a better place.
The types of wall systems that you have to build out here?
I think it would be helpful just to understand what it would take to get our system goes to a better place.
The types of wall systems that you'd have to build after? And do we have replacements?
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like we're very quickly giving up on buildings that in the first report that we got back in September, found that all of the buildings were structurally satisfactory. So we obviously need to improve them and we want to improve them. And it's my question is, what would it take to move them above satisfactory to a higher?
So to answer that, we have to know two things. One, would we be targeting simply code line based requirements or would we be targeting higher performance? I mean, either case, the short answer is that it really entails pretty much reconstructing the assembly or creating a secondary composure envelope on either one side or the other of the assembly. And then as I mentioned before, in terms of the roof, significantly upgrading and reconstructing the structure of the roof. That's what we can clearly tell you without, you know, jumping into the very focus.
Do we have the slab assembly?
Yeah. And right. This could not, this could not be true to short of such a labor. Slab roof and side, putting insulation down, putting down a new one would not be a recommendation.
And to add a little bit more to that, Maria, thank you for the question. It's valid on that, that's always the first question. Two blocks under Wolf from the building proofies here. And that goes back to the earlier slides when Caleb was talking about new construction versus renovation. Go forward and Julia touched upon that topic as well to just tackle the insulation on the roof line below. Yes, if you take insulation, insulating the entire roof, make that better. But the added physical load, the weight on that, you would have to actually test the structural integrity of the roof to whether or not they would hold that on top of the snow load that would be on that as well. And I'll point out one of the SRF applications that was submitted that I believe is being considered as a structural roof issue at the high school where the structural capacity of a certain portion of the roof may not necessarily be enough to support an entire full load of snow. So if you can't support the load of snow, how can you support additional insulation out there without significantly structural reinforcement? And when you're talking about that, you're talking about evacuating a portion of the school for a extended period of time, taking a lot of the wall frames and structures down to a stud and redoing that, that again, going back to the beginning of the presentation. It's a very significant undertaking with also its own, its own corresponding costs as well.
If you undertook renovations when you're required to, please move over, correct?
Please clarify what renovations you would like to do and what areas you would like to do.
Correct, and certain percentages, like if you affect a certain percentage of the building, that triggers other code compliant issues as well. You know, if you just do a small portion of the building, you're fine between everything sort of grandfathered as it is. But over time, you don't think, you know, say for instance, you renovate more than forty percent of a building, that's just an example, there are different baselines for any kind of application. You would be forced to tackle the rest of the facility. And then with that, the money invested into that starts to creep up significantly.
Well, we were, I'm sorry.
So this is an oversimplification, but does this sound accurate from what I'm hearing? That though the buildings in the initial report were considered satisfactory, which then sounds like that, to actually improve them is a huge challenge and not easily done.
For the straightforward answer, yes, that's correct.
And with the oversimplification.
Correct, I mean, you have the building, it can be repurposed and used or any other different applications there. But you still have an issue of if you were to know what building has a school, you would still need a school, there just needs to go into.
Right, we don't want to completely discount the value that these buildings do have. But when you consider money invested renovating these buildings versus money that would be invested in actually doing new construction, it's totally fair to look at what you're really, what you're looking at in terms of what you're getting from a building performance standpoint for either that or the other.
And that's, and that's also here as part of your charge that Dr. Wolf pointed out earlier is the course of action that we're going to take. Our job is to provide all the options for you to consider. And just for the sake of time, I think we'll keep moving forward here, discontinuing with the energy usage of buildings, like I was going to talk about.
I could just go on one more thing. So the answer to your question is the dollars per square foot to get above code compliant between one and two will come, again, guessing, probably within thirty percent of what it would cost to build new. And then you've already got this layout that's not ideal, as Perry pointed out last time, this long drawn out building with a very inefficient energy shade to it. And in order to do that renovation, you have to add the cost of temporary trailers on top of that. And as soon as we started adding all that up, it just pointed to, yes, they are structurally sound and they'll stand up for a long time. But when you add all that up, pretty soon you're darn near the cost of the brand new building, which is why we need to still.
And we would still have major security issues. We would still have a cafeteria with five lunch periods and twenty minutes each. So this is the opportunity to address those issues as well.
This is a cool slide because I'm an engineer and I'm a geek. So James is going to cut me off here pretty quick. Nice to Perry, we got some really great energy usage data. And the three, the three little bullets on this, to the right are the most important ones. So right now, your high school, the high school uses seventy-five thousand BTUs per square foot. On code, it's roughly a hundred and twenty, makes sense, the building's a little bit older. As Perry pointed out, it's a great thing to be set. The shape of the building is just, it's not going to, you need to be being short and squatty and you need it to build up so the heat stays in and any wasted heat in one floor goes up through to the next one. So the median, you can see on the graph, the median is sixty-eight point seven times BTUs per square foot. So if you look at that and think, hey, the high school's not doing too bad, right? Okay, well, remember the high school on our chart that we've been showing you all along, still has fifteen years of life left in it. So that's okay. The near passive on the blue charts that Julia showed you earlier, we can get that sixty-eight point seven down into the forty to fifty thousand range. And that can start to save a lot of money. Insulation is not that expensive and the return is really, really good. You're all seeing these new, the zip system, have you ever seen the zip system now? When somebody builds a house, it's, you've got the plywood that we're all used to seeing when we were growing up, and now it's all taped? That tape is to keep the air from flushing in and out of your home. All these, and the tape is just the start of what you see in new construction practices, to tighten up a building. I'll talk about this all night. So using, using a median of fifty thousand BTUs per square foot, just on your managing costs alone for the elementary and middle school, it equates to a savings of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in heating costs. Tack that onto one point two million, what was, what was the VCT?
One point two million for all.
All, for all the schools. You're looking at a really, really, starting to look at some really good paybacks. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year off your heating bills is worth coming in.
That is something the same square foot size.
It does, and actually, we believe that we can write size.
Right, so if you squeeze it down.
And that will only improve that, this is based on the same, same class, thank you.
Yeah, try to keep apples and apples off the desk.
I don't want to talk too much about the high school right now, using the same numbers that we, you know, we'd save about a hundred thousand. But remember, we're, in our current recommendation, we're recommending that the high school bill go down the road about fifteen years. Let's use it up, use it up, it's its entire life before you do this. So just one, back to the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year savings. It represents almost thirteen percent over the life of the building, almost thirteen percent savings on the payback on the building itself.
Thirteen, I've mentioned thirteen percent of what?
The actual building cost.
So, do you have a build cost?
Right.
Do you have a build cost? I haven't heard of any build costs. So I'm trying to figure thirteen percent of what?
We've been trying not to do a build cost out there. If you, we have it right size, square footage.
I understand that, but.
But we ragged, it's somewhere between, it's probably between three hundred and fifteen to five hundred bucks, so four hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. It's probably between eighty and a hundred and six thousand, right? For the building.
What, do you say the square foot is three hundred to five hundred?
Three hundred to, top three fifty to four fifty per square foot. And you're looking at, if you write sizes, it's a hundred and six.
Sorry, seven thousand square feet, yeah.
You don't know how much we'd save, or something less than that.
So go continuing further with the utility comparison, Perry is gracious enough to follow to the next few slides here, which next one about oil, oil, water, propane, electricity. It's currently being used by all the current schools here.
This kind of goes with what Caleb's saying. I'm not an engineer, but I'll, I'll give you just a brief overview of what we go through in our building. The high school and Richard's school, they're all tied together. They, they work off the same heating system, they work off the same electrical system. It's a little bit hard to figure out. These are fairly accurate average prices that we run into within a year. So the high school, Richard's school, uses about sixty-nine thousand gallons of number two fuel oil every year. And the middle school, Ponco, uses about seventy thousand two hundred and thirty-three gallons per year. I just wanted to point out, the way this is a hot topic for me right now, I'm currently tracking, tracking the number two fuel oil and how it's fluctuating day by day. Peak over seventy gallons, seventy dollars per barrel for the weekend. Topped out at like seventy-two and a half, perhaps, sixty-two and a half. Right, so I'm in the process of locking this in for fuel oil. I buy fuel oil for the town, in this school, it's roughly, we buy a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of fuel in one shot. So a fluctuation of ten cents between one day and another, you're looking at twelve thousand dollar difference that can affect the budget one year or another. So it's kind of a hot topic for me. The average annual electric usage, we do about six cents per kilowatt hour, which is rid. We're currently locked into that contract for another two years. High school, Richard's school, we're looking at over a million kilowatts per hour. Middle school, Ponco, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand kilowatts per hour. Average annual water usage, and this includes sewage as well. High school, Richard's school, over two and a half million. And the middle school, Ponco, just two million and four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The average propane usage, now we do keep our buildings proportions with some propane, most of it is kitchen usage, but the high school and Richard's school is twenty-six thousand three hundred and forty-seven thousand gallons. The middle school, Ponco, it's four thousand fifty-six gallons.
And one quick note that I want to add into here is that when we were talking about square footages earlier, I think we just want to look at the top number. Want to look at the top number for gallons per year for oil. Square footage for a high school is a hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet or so. And the middle school is about a hundred and six thousand square feet. And recently, this past year, middle school used more gallons of oil than that's fifty, fifty plus thousand square feet less of space that's needed. Just again, just putting things in perspective.
Annual operating cost per square foot for the high school is figured to be one dollar and eighty cents per square foot of the building. And the middle school and Ponco is two dollars and seventeen cents per square foot of the building. I've spoken with Todd Jepson at Scarborough High School and was working with him, and their high school runs at a dollar oh five per square foot. That's their, that's their best, most efficient building they have. And that's their usage for the square footage as compared to ours. And if they do over school, have just completed their first year with their new building, and they're operating at sixty-five cents per square foot. I'm going to use the example of the Scarborough High School with the middle school on because it's a little more accurate, the pool's not involved. So if you took the hundred and five thousand, I'm sorry, a dollar five per square foot, subtract it from the two hundred and seventeen dollars, two dollars and seventeen cents per square foot, we were looking at savings difference of a hundred and ninety-one thousand just in that change alone.
Possible.
That is?
That's it.
Any questions?
I have a question. Do we, do we operate on our own when we're purchasing fuel for the town? Or do we belong to like the Maine Education Association Purchasing Cooperative or?
I, I use a vendor that puts it out to multiple oil companies. They, they actually go even out of state with it to try to land us the best price. We do not go into other schools or anything like that. But like this current year, I think we're locked in for, I believe it's a dollar seventy-five a gallon, so we got a really good price this year. Last year was a little tougher, but you know, trying to lock in that good price again this year before things get out of hand in the Middle East.
When the operational cost, talking about that, that's just the heating and cooling costs.
That is heating, cooling, water, electric, the whole package.
Perry, any questions?
So the high school cost would include the cost of the pool?
That does not include the cost of the pool.
That dollar and eighty does not include the cost of the pool.
Correct.
What was the savings of the VCT tile too? Because if they're talking about savings, a hundred and ninety-one thousand plus whatever the VCT, which doesn't require the counter and stuff.
Right, I don't think we actually ever came to a figure for that because it would depend on the surface of the floor we use. Polished concrete is a, is a hot item right now, and we'll see a lot of stores, Walmart, Targets, they're all going to that. You can actually see where they had some deep tile on the floor and removed it. It's all due to saving costs and overheads.
Do you have a Walmart or a Target?
We've got the maintenance cost for all the school systems with six hundred thousand dollars annually to maintain the VCT tile.
So the six plus the one ninety-one just by.
The maintenance cost, that's people, larger?
It's chemicals, it's, yeah, it is very labor intensive. All of the.
That's what I thought, it's mostly cheap.
Yeah, and all of the.
It's chemicals, labor involved.
Moving all of the furniture outside of the classroom, traveling back in, staying for.
Many hours.
And I also should note there's a, when crumbles out of downtime for that, your school is basically unoccupied during the summer months to get that accomplished.
Yes. Makes it difficult. Right, we, I also wanted to point out back to what we were talking about earlier. This building is valued by Maine Municipal Insurance at just over twenty-eight million dollars. When you start looking at, I believe it was twelve million dollars just to bring our repairs up to where they need to be, and then throw in what you needed to do for glazing and insulation and roofing and everything else to make it a little more energy efficient, you're not looking at basically doing the work of what the building costs for the value of it, so.
Thanks, Perry. So bringing this to an end, just so we can have time and be able to discuss it with further questions and moving forward, again, our goal here is to provide all the options out of the table for you folks. And based on feedback that we had last time, we looked at another scenario where we could do sort of a phase replacement of the schools while still prolonging the life of the high school which still has, as we showed previously, the previous phase. We have a chart here in Varia, one of the other things as well, of the fifteen to thirty years. We'll jump to the next slide. So we're looking at the replacement of the K two nine school building. It's a spatial concept building, just so folks know, we're not going to create oval shaped buildings or anything like that. That's not the plan, or any kind of plan really. But when Caleb was mentioning earlier about any sort of replacement, either if it's a major renovation. or if it's an actual building replacement as well, you would lose, you would lose access to this athletic field here. Either for construction laydown during major renovation, or if you were to use that as sort of an ideal location for building a new, uh, new facility. I'll come back to this slide, if you want to jump to the next slide real quick. Uh, Julia, down here, and this concept, it would be to renovate, I'll start here with the, sort of the, the straightforward ones. With the high school, you want to do, uh, specific renovations to this building to sort of extend the life of it, to, to bring it to its end of life, another fifteen or so years. That way, you're separating out any sort of major work that you do at this building and the high school. So, you're not dealing with this forty, fifty years down the road when you have to address these buildings again. You want to make sure that these are all separate. It's like if you own a series of buildings, you don't necessarily want to replace the roof at the same time of all of them. It's very costly, and then you end up on the same situation again fifteen, twenty years later, when you have to replace those and go back to the original. So, what, this is a phased approach, and I apologize if this is really a ledge over here. This wall will be made available online tomorrow, this week, uh, voted for everyone to take a look at. Sort of multi-phase approach to replace the, uh, K three-eight buildings here. So, starting with the middle school, uh, we would, the idea would be to want to build a new middle school in this athletic field while keeping the entire structure of the building in operation. Uh, by building a new middle school, this athletic field, you have that available real estate. All the main utilities, the electricity, the water, uh, the oil, the boiler plant, that's all located in this corner of the building right here. So, all of your underground feeds from your road utilities come in through this way. And those can be intercepted and put into a new boiler plant or a new central utility plant inside the middle, inside of the proposed new middle school building. So, the phase one, we temporarily remove the athletic field, it will be relocated or brought back in a separate location once all, it's all said and done. The existing nineteen thirties building, it's a beautiful historic structure, and you would hate to take that away. Uh, one, one item that Julia touched on earlier, with the varying slabs throughout the, throughout the facility. This is in nineteen thirty-eight, and this was built, this section was built in the forties, in the fifties, the sixties, seventies. Uh, the two thousand and four wing over here, the nineteen ninety-five, uh, elementary school wing is brown. So, this building is sort of a piecemeal together over the years. And when we touched upon it back in November, is you have heat and hot water here that's trying to send all of that all the way around this building, so that you have the same amount of heat and hot water here as you do right here. It's very inefficient, you just have so much loss there, that you're spending an exorbitant amount of energy and utilities getting that there. That's why you see the oil consumption is new, is more than the high school for this past year, for a small, much smaller building. Um, so you would construct, you want to phase one, you'd construct a new middle school here, going to phase two. Uh, once the middle school is complete, uh, you would take the current, uh, middle school class student population, they would go to the new middle school. You would take the lower school students, you'd do some limited renovation in the existing middle school. They would then have their classes in the existing middle school for a period of time while the Ponco was torn down and a new lower school, Ponco school is built in this place. That way, you can have class going on with subsequent, uh, subsequent major pieces of construction going on. And also, there's a major educational opportunity for, for this as well, for students that want to graduate or have aspirations to become an architect and become an engineer, they could see this happen right in the background without having to go anywhere. Uh, and that's something that we always part, we always have, uh, student mentors come into our offices and the opportunity to really, to, to share a building experience with the students and, uh, and kids is really, it's a good one that you would want to pass up. So, you would build a new lower, a lower, a new, excuse me, a new lower school here, and once that is complete, uh, the, sort of the temporarily relocated students who spent a year in the existing middle school would then go back to the lower school in this location, and then the existing building would be taken down. Um, so you're wondering how we have this huge space in here, and again, this is all very conceptual, which is trying to provide a phase option that keeps you in this section of your property on this campus without sprawling everywhere and potentially upsetting any future plans that you have twenty, thirty years down the road. And in the middle, this sort of mixed space, that's what you would have, that's where you would have your new auditorium, that's where you would have, uh, your cafeteria, that's where you would have your new gym. And those would be the shared spaces between the two schools in this space. There are in that year or so where it's temporary, you would still probably use the existing cafeteria, uh, this space here for, for your meals and so on, with just temporary, um, a temporary setup, just to get you through until the new school is built. And then they would be connected by some kind of structure that ties all three of these buildings together, really all four of these together here. Again, maintaining existing nineteen thirty schoolhouse, whether you wanted to repurpose that into, um, school offices or town offices, um, additionally, if you have something like a cafeteria or auditorium in the center between these two buildings, it's an opportunity for, um, folks who need to park, you can come through the front door, you can walk right in and enjoy like that community event or something like that. That's a little bit more, more detail farther along, but again, this is a, um, just a sample, uh, as an option that in terms of direction you could go. Yes, Susan?
I'm just looking at this, it, it feels like it wouldn't solve the, the issue of, of the, the buildings being so far apart in terms of, you know, saving on energy and the flow of heating.
So, and that's a great question that you ask that. In here, what you would do is when you have the new middle school, you have your, you have your utility plant to, to, uh, to heat and cool, uh, the middle school at that point, with enough capacity to support the lower school. But when the lower school gets built as well, what you do is you have dual systems in place. So, they both feed off of each other, they both communicate with one another, they share the same fuel supply, they share the same source of power. Uh, so you wouldn't have that issue trying to send hot water from this corner all the way through around in this corner again. I mean, that's, that was one of the major, major points that folks had, is it's too hot in my room, it's too cold in my room, I don't get hot water out of this faucet. Obviously, that's something that would be addressed in a scenario such as this. Yes?
Can you mention the placement of the middle school takes into account where the utilities are coming in?
Yes, some of them are anyways, yes.
Would it be hugely problematic to move everything away from the nineteen thirties building if we wanted to use it for non-school purpose?
Yeah, uh, that, again, that's, that's a possible option. I mean, again, this is just one, one scenario here, there are a multitude of different scenarios where you locate different structures and combine them together on this, uh, on this campus. The reason why we put this here is because it seems to be one, it would be the most easiest and sort of straightforward approach if you wanted to utilize existing space and to really try to minimize as many costs as you can. You have all of this underground work that's here already. You just build a brand new playground on this side, so it makes sense that you want the lower school to be on that side of the site as well. So, that way, you're not, you know, you spend all this energy, you put this playground together now, and you don't want to have a lower school away from that necessarily.
But the thirty, actually thirty second, it could be a freestanding building, and these two facilities could be connected in the future by the shared facility of the auditorium and cafeteria.
And we wanted to prove a concept where we weren't having to rent trailers, so you didn't have the rental cost and, and all the logistics that go with that and security around rental trailers and everything. It's actually a great segue question into sort of when, when the needs assessment report is finally done and closed up and moved to a study, um, and it would be to study all the options for that. Part of it, and pulling it back from the road, making sure that the sight lines from the road are attractive, and really figuring it out, but we want, again, we want to prove the concept that you can do this in a phased approach and not have to rent trailers and have all this associated cost.
I have a question. Can you go back to the slide that shows the field? Go on. Now, is that field going away temporarily, or with this design, does that field go away permanently? Knowing how much that field could use, both with school and other town sports and everything. Do we ever reclaim the space, put that field?
The question is if it could fit a field down here and reclaim the area where we are currently, and, and Ponco is, could be fit a field in there.
Okay. So, yeah. They're just sitting on home plate right now.
That field could use a lot.
No, I'm sure, in, in understanding, it was, that would be temporary, you know? You have a little, basically, uh, you think of it as a puzzle piece, you're just shifting around pieces of the puzzle on the site to see what the most efficient layout and path, not just for locations of the athletic fields, but also for traffic flow, um, and bus drop off, or drop off and pickup for buses and, and parents coming in as well. You know, those sort of factors would be taken into account.
Could you elaborate on that? Is it used for baseball or just general play?
Well, if you come here during the daytime, they, they, uh.
Physically.
The gym, what do they call it?
Physically.
Physically, the phys-entire, they're all day long.
Right.
And the evenings during soccer season, it's being used, it's the, the baseball team plays there, so it's used quite a bit.
Great.
And I'll say, just, uh, I'll, this, I'm on, almost over these last two slides, and then we'll, we'll continue with the question, and obviously, the question is a lot of people. Uh, agreed timeline on what this scenario would look like. Um, the January, February of twenty twenty, you say complete needs assessment. The needs assessment is complete, you have that physical document in front of you here. What we would do is we would take all the information from these building committees, committee meetings, and put that in as additional appendix into, and then the piece to the building, uh, to the needs assessment. So, in the, following along this timeline, in June twenty twenty, there would be, uh, passing the school budget, uh, authorization for bond preparation documents. That would take us throughout the following year to twenty twenty-one, where you would study this site. There would be programming meetings with faculty and staff to say, okay, we've now discussed what you, what doesn't necessarily work out well for you in this school, what would be your IT situation here? Um, we would go through and essentially do a design to a certain point on the CFT ability and accurate cost for what that bond would actually look like. So, a year from twenty twenty to twenty, June twenty twenty to June twenty twenty-one, it would be the bond preparation documents for sizing the bond for the town to phone on whether they would accept and reject it for June twenty twenty-one. And that would be to replace both the K three-eight schools and renovate the high school as well. Again, renovating the high school to last another fifteen years, addressing any security concerns that there, that were pointed out, um, as well as the phase replacement of both of these schools here in this slide please. And then from that point, if that were to proceed forward, between June twenty twenty-one and April twenty twenty-two, uh, you would design those schools and start construction. Between May twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, that's when, uh, the, the new school and high school renovation would, uh, that's when they would be, that, that's when they would be complete. Yeah, we designed whole schools and start construction in April twenty twenty-two, August twenty twenty-three, the new middle school would be complete, so that you're occupying the new middle school for your phys, your, your physical, yeah, your academic year, end of the fall of twenty, uh, twenty-three. And then between June twenty twenty-three and August twenty twenty-four, the phase two, this would be the demolition of portion of the old Ponco, the build of the new Ponco school. That would take place to be completed in time for students to occupy the school, uh, the new, uh, Ponco school, lower school for better term, in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Sorry, I stumbled on myself there a few times. And with that, I think that's, that, that is, that is the end of our presentation. But any questions that folks have, this is, this is an ongoing discussion that we have, I believe we have a point there, so. Yes, Julia?
So, the timeline that we've just presented, and sort of been introduced by the square foot slide that I, I should have explained or pre, pre-prepared a little bit better in detail, but the last time we met with you, we had alternate scenarios also in play, where we were looking at potentially doing the high school first. And because what we found, um, in our square footage investigations, and also what we learned once we got the bonding information back, it really seems as though the approach to doing the middle school and elementary school first really makes the most sense. That being said, we would highly recommend as part of the overall initial phasing study, we would incorporate contemplation of the future replacement of a high school beyond simply renovations into that, just so that it could begin to be part of the, the broader discussion of the school going forward.
In your long, in your long term, like fifteen, twenty years?
That's a really important point, because we want to make sure that you don't make a decision here if you're correct in another full year.
And that really goes back to, to this diagram, the whole conversation of the bigger picture of all of the, the various infrastructural pieces of the town, there's a lot of how they get phased, so that they're not, um, overlapping in a way that prevents, that prevents hardship or anything like that, or blind, you know, anything that's impossible, repeatable, um, and, and works into the cycle. Questions?
Yes, Mary?
So, I have a question of how we can afford all this if Matt started off with a maximum debt today of twenty-seven million? And then you talked about three to four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for a hundred and six thousand, and maybe you can write size it and make it a hundred thousand. That would be for the middle school alone, between thirty and forty-five million. That's a big sway, but that's basically what I'm hearing you say. And I'm hearing Matt say the maximum debt that the town can add at this point is twenty-seven. So, is it the maximum? I know that a lot of work has to be done, and I, I understand that. But I just wonder about whether we should be prioritizing what should be done within a maximum budget, or moving forward and putting out something that I'm hearing we can't do, so. That's where I, it's my question, because I know there's a lot of work that needs to be done, especially the security. That's just one school, that doesn't include renovations to the high school at the same time. And I'm also worried about the superintendent being able to manage two big projects at one time. And is he superintendent and managed the school? I've been involved in, in many courthouse renovations in the sixty to a hundred million range, and I know that that sucks a lot of time out of folks who are trying to do other things. So, why don't you just put those questions on the table, because what I want to see is a successful project and a wonderful space for our kids. Just not sure how we get there. Based on?
You bring up a really good point, Mary Ann, and Steve, is there is, there does appear to be a gap there. And given the data we have now, I think we're sort of exhausted where we are, and we need a little more study to figure out, you know, what can the town, what can the town, what, what is, what can they actually do and want to do? How much do we actually know, and you need to do this whole amendment, as James mentioned up with, a long range by, you know, maybe, maybe this is the proposal of a, of a twenty year, you know, we do this now, and wait a few years, then we do it in the next phase, then the one after that is the high school, and it goes on. And, um, yeah, some homework needs to be done still.
I would argue that this is the first step, though, I think we've taken that attitude, which I, I don't disagree with you at all, Mary Ann. But it's gotten to a point where we're stuck with three cars to be replacing at once, or three houses with three to be replacing at once. We've heard all the analogies that you guys laid out, but it makes a lot of sense. I mean, I don't have a, I don't think anyone at the table has a firm concrete timeline at play on, but I think having these conversations is the first step. Um, and if we don't start here, I don't know where we start. Uh, my kids will be graduating before any of this happens, which is a bummer, but, um, that almost doesn't, it matters to me at all. I think that the, the strength of our communities is based on, on what we're talking about in all these slides. And if we can't make the commitment now to do whatever it is that takes that gets us through a ten, twenty, thirty year plan, then I don't know why we're here.
So, my question is probably for Matt, and so what I'm, I wanted, I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the, um, two thousand dollar debt per capita, um, that would be the maximum recommended to keep our current bond rating? Or, like, why is it a maximum? Because what I believe is that it's not truly a maximum, it's a recommendation. And so, I want to have that conversation, so that we're not saying, okay, it's twenty-seven million, and that's the maximum, there's nowhere else to go, I want to hear about. And I'm not, and because there's a big difference between that three hundred and eighteen million and the twenty-seven, and I'm not a proponent of cashing out our college, but, you know, but there is some, there is some space in between there.
Mostly is what you're looking at. Your, your biggest exposure, or that's probably the most acceptable exposure, before you start to act, or, or address it. You have to change your mind, and you're all sudden, you're, you're out of the space, you know, it's not, yeah.
Just one, you know, one more, you've got a house, zero credit back debt, you know, like that, credit risk, but all of a sudden you've got a lot of, they said, that's when it starts to change that.
How far we can leverage ourselves?
Well, that's what's acceptable to the market before they start, the sand start to shift a little bit. Obviously, there are towns that may, maybe that. There's also voters that you have to take into place because that conversation is all they love, and ultimately, sometimes it changes.
Right, once the appetite is in the town, agreed.
So if you're looking at three and a half times, in case of what you may come to, you may find that you push back, you just have to go. Part of that, I think, is what the recommendations are, is like, okay, you get up to a certain level, but after a while, folks are going to say, okay.
It's just, it might be worth a conversation of what are, you know, what, what are the, what are the increments, what are the, you know? We, we need to know what, how far we can leverage ourselves and still stay in a positive position. And again, like you said, it's going to come down to the voters. And so what, you know, what are the voters willing to invest to get it done?
That's going to be a real key. Because right now, we have real solid, we've enjoyed real strong support from the town. Part of why we do it is the town's well-run at the town level, at the school level. Cape Elizabeth, some of the challenges we have is it's now a place people want to retire to. So it's challenging for young families to move here. But you have solid support from the town, citizens. Part of it is because we have this high rating, it's well-run. And if, if you go beyond the point where it's responsible borrowing, to the point where it starts affecting our credit rating, I think that's when you begin getting some pushback. So I think it's something that really, right now, you've got solid support from the citizens.
I think another thing to keep in mind is that if the town does accept this, they may expect to see decreases in the school budget based on all of the energy standards. So, you know, they're, they're not probably going to be excited to see the increases. They may not be excited to see things even saying black.
The other conversation I think we really have to continue to have and focus on is the right-sizing concept. Because I think, again, people in town will really respect that we're, we're right-sizing the school for the population that we're going to have, not just now, but what's going to be 10 years from now, and making sure that the facilities are right-sized. And I think one of the slides up there that we could utilize for that is, is if we go, if we modernize, update, fix, improve, and we can actually get more efficient square footage per, per student, I think that's another positive that we can utilize and explain to the, to the townspeople.
Other questions?
Yes, we need to think about next steps. And I think probably the, the next thing that we need to do, this is my idea, so other people might not agree, but, but it's just to have the committee meet, and of course, any interested citizens, to talk about where do we go from here and start thinking about renovations. And I guess, I guess one of the biggest, the biggest questions that are on people's minds are, you know, could we really afford even to go to step one? So that's something that we need to wrap with as a committee. Other thoughts about next steps?
I mean, I don't have any kids in the school, but I do hear from parents that have kids in the school that step one might, or many of them, be a security. You know, and even looking at some of this now, I think you're addressing some of that with the $988,000 that we're hopeful to get. Some of those six projects, are they security related?
Unfortunately, they're not. We were capped by, there's a, there's a cap on each application that we were listed as to pay for a certain amount of money on that. And the cost to overhaul the front entrance of the building, put the administrative offices out front there, really add in your double doors for security where someone comes in, it closes, and then they're authorized to come into the building. It would have far exceeded the money available in the SRF funds. So when the SRF funds were only able to target very sort of small, specific items in the building, or looking at family pre-cas window sales, roof issues, age back considerations, potentially the dust shop of the high school, so.
So, so my concern about that is, that's something I've kind of been a proponent of trying to do something with that right away. And I still feel that way. Even, even on the, looking at projecting this out, that wasn't going to get done for a while, but I, I would really feel, even if it's something that's temporary, that's going to ultimately get replaced once we do something else with the building, that I still see, and you probably hear, Troy probably hears, concerned about making sure that the building gets secure. So I, I'd still like to see that in some, in some way addressed.
I think safety is, you know, fire up if you don't know what plans are, by wait. Because we may really regret it if we wait two or three years. So I think that's a high rate. Next question I have is, are we talking 300,000 square feet or, that's what we have right now, right? Between the two buildings, 300,000 square feet?
It's 106,000 plus, 106,000 plus 165, so about 270, 275,000.
And if you, and if you rebuild it, I hear 106.
I'm sorry?
If you completely rebuild the school, this is 106,000?
106,000 is just the Pond Coles School and the middle school combined. That is this entire structure on this size, 106,000 square feet. We believe with doing a lot of building practices, that square footage would potentially shrink, while still maximizing the amount of efficiency within the building for classroom, transfer space, storage, so.
Okay, now, another question I have is, now we just spent a couple, you know, on this, could we move in? Do you know what the ARV value is on those roofs just two, three years ago?
According to the 2024 report, it lists two hundred and fifty inches of insulation. So we assume that's rigid insulation, that those roofs at maximum are 12.5 hard, are you?
Could you check them out? Because I thought the state had a mandate, certainly in industrial buildings, I work on, is out of 20, I thought the state had a mandate at least of half, three. And if you remove those roofs, I'd like to know. I did some checking, but I didn't come up with the right movement anymore. So I'd like to know.
We just will look into that, we can submit an answer if done. If you sign in on the sign-in sheet, we can submit an answer if everybody has it.
Another thought I had over the past couple of days is, what if, what if we kept the structures as they are, that was done on, maybe glazing, everything, for a bit of disruption? That should be a priority, and then look inside the buildings. And what, let's, what do we do, what do we, should we, what should we do to improve the living standards and classroom standards inside the home, where I can spend more money inside, create a better environment, maybe that's smarter than, to avoid one house a square foot that this town can afford, if you had a whole square foot each other. To me, that's one of my inside goal, improve the efficiencies, lab, towards, or the high school, the aerops, and then take care of teachers, teachers.
Yes, Mary.
I thought that this would make a very good idea, I think, and talking about where we go from here. I know that these schools have a lot of needs, and some of the last builders, maybe some older than dirt, I know it's time to do something. And so I would really be interested in understanding what we could do, looking at the 27 million that Matt has talked about. That, to me, is a, to me, is a really substantial step in doing what we need to do to take care of the kids. It might not be everything that everyone wants to do, but I kind of believe that with buildings that are substantially, substantially satisfactory shape, we can take 27 million and turn these buildings into something that's really good for the kids and address the security, which I totally agree with. And I think that was the first discussion when this, I mean, first time this meeting a couple of years ago, was the security and the cap, cap auditorium, that every, all of us have tripped over these stairs for a bazillion years. So Alexi was talking about it.
So can we go back to just the 27 million, because it does come up a couple times? Which I wrote down 27 million too. But then, that didn't include the next sort of three of whatever it was going down that we ballparked, could be 9 million, it could be 7 million, but it's, it's really, we were using all math. It's 27 plus some other number that could come off in the next three years, right?
Oh, the next three numbers, that, that fits.
Yeah, it's a 27 now, and then something coming later.
Yep, yep.
What I will, I will add, and Jen, thank you very much for your question, your comments as well. My mother was a teacher, and I can attest that most important thing that you have are your teachers here. And with regard to trying to improve on the interior of the building, there are a lot of things that you can do. You can address the glazing, you can address the windows, a certain portion of that. What, some things you would be limited to is, for instance, this room, this concrete makes near units, these concrete walls here, these will last for many, many years, well beyond we are all gone, these walls will still be here because these, these concrete units are meant to last. But what is very difficult about them is modifying the place. If we're trying to, say, level this floor, for instance, to turn this from a three-tiered cafeteria into a single-tier here, just by pouring concrete on this, because of the frosts heaves, and we all see that in our house, you know, we're talking split foundations and things like that. For instance, some of the cracks are, are in the hallway out here going out back where the buildings start to separate from the walls to some extent. You know, those are all factors in there. And I will add one, one quick point on the cost, a key that I mentioned earlier, the square foot cost, it is certainly a range. Depending on what the market conditions are for construction, the past several years, construction market has been very aggressive. A lot of bids, a lot of projects have been coming significantly high, higher than people can imagine. Maybe OT, they canceled $55 million of the projects this year because bids were coming in 30, 40% over standard estimates of what those are. And that's what drives those costs from, you know, what should be $275 a square foot or less, to $400 a square foot. And having, having the, having the thought put into it is if there's a specific direction on this, to have that studied as far as, all right, if this is the plan of action that we want to go, how much is this going to cost? I mean, that is, that is an option for the board, for this committee to recommend at the school board to proceed forward with the saying, I want to investigate this option, and this is the recommendation that we have.
Could I, could I ask you, Derek, to comment on the square footage? Because I hate to put you on the spot, but this is your question.
Yeah, I, as we all know, construction costs are not going down, they're going to keep going up. And I don't see it changing anytime soon. A lot of it's labor-driven in the marketplace. Materials are fairly stable for the most part, other than, say, a few things that are related items. We have a labor shortage in our state, not just in construction, but in a lot of other industries. But construction was really hit hard in the last 10 years or so, I'd say, when we had our last recession. They said today we lost a quarter of our labor force since the last recession. So, and the labor force we do have is very old, averaging 55 or older. So young people are not going into the trades, so the cost of construction is not going to go down. Fortunately, most of the costs are labor-driven. So I'm not sure what I can tell you, other than it's going to keep going up.
Yes, Derek, and to a point that Scott made in our team meeting, by postponing this decision, it's only going to get more expensive.
Do you remember off the top of your head, when we, you did the first go-around, you guys actually came up with some concept ideas of new cafeterias out here, new safety, across, the total cost of that? So I did, I think you came up with a total cost.
There were, there were some messages that we had, and again, the initial go-around, and we had that in Tyler earlier, where fall 2017, spring 2018, I think those were around 30 million dollars.
I thought so too, right?
So, yeah, that involved, essentially, you were, those concepts are all available online for people to go back and take a look at. But that was a branded cafeteria in the courtyard space between the two schools, and it would be taking this current cafeteria and renovating, changing it into a branded auditorium for the space, as well as a complete overhaul of the front entry where you're moving the administration offices to the front entrance, and making that a lot more secure. Again, that was, right, that was the purpose of that exercise. So that was in the 30 million dollar range. But again, if that's the course of action to be taken, what would be, what the next step is, and as far as a design standpoint, is repair, sort of a bond support package, where we include design drawings, 3D renders of what it would look like. You would go into, you spend a significant amount of time and hours investigating the current market and cost for a lot of this, a lot of this construction work. And that would give you your cost for what your actual bond would be like to finish the design and build at the following year. This is all a very staged approach where you have your initial study to see, okay, say, for instance, you want to completely overhaul this building, the first thing that we do is we would look at what would need to be done to this building to overhaul it. We've done a lot of that already, but now we would be pointing, all right, what specific, down to detail items that we're going to be fully doing here? What, what's, not necessarily the brand, but specific items that we would install in here that would help drive the, indicate what that cost would be for a bond following that you would vote on, and then proceed with construction at that point. So you need an upfront effort to start that.
So I really wasn't really sort of bringing that up as an alternative to what we're thinking about doing, but I kind of just wanted to float that number out there, thinking that that was something that we proposed, didn't involve renovating any part of, any of the teaching spaces in the school, but strictly the sort of day-to-day running of a new kitchen and a cafeteria and the safety that Tim has been talking about in both of these schools. And, and that's a lot of money, right there.
Right, right.
So.
Can I go to who actually parried the, who's in our, parried?
I just wanted to point out that when we did that first figure that was given, that was prior to the study, and does not include the estimated 12 million, and the 7 million that have been worked into the high school. And maybe factor as well, as far as the cancer.
Just thinking along the lines of steam in terms of possibly plan B's or plan C. I know there's costs associated with temporary classrooms, but perhaps we should reconsider that. If, in my mind, the oldest and the most dilapidated in the one building that needs the most attention has the most problems is the middle school. So by my, what if we moved the middle school students, teachers into temporary classrooms where they're here, tore this down and built in the middle, a new middle school that connected that much closer to the elementary school? And then we fix the problems associated with safety and cafeteria and all that? Would that have any reduction in estimated cost for doing that? Or would that just be equal?
The only issue, and from an engineering standpoint, the only issue if you wanted to just do the middle school The, the only issue, and from an engineering standpoint, the only issue if you wanted to just do the middle school only, leave the upper middle, lower middle, the lower school in place, is that most of your utilities come into the middle school right, right actually, right through over here. This is where your boiler plant is, this is where electrical service is, that takes care of the entire building. You would have to construct a new boiler plant or a new electrical service to feed the other school, at least temporarily, while the new middle school is being constructed. And you potentially still have the issue of, but you would move the schools closer together. But the middle school is sort of the, the heart that sort of pumps the blood through the rest of the building. But that is an option. I mean, really, we'll look at three options here. One option is to sort of do nothing, and to sort of maintain as you have that, I'm going to assign, which, I mean, the vibe of the audience here is probably not an option. And the second option is to go through substantial renovation. We had mentioned that earlier, this line up involves a temporary relocation of students and classrooms, portals, finding locations for all of that, working on the services, and it's not just classrooms too. It's bathrooms, it's where are they going to be for cafeteria, where are students going to play, and sort of their performances, where's all that going to go? You know, that have to all of a sudden transfer everything over to the high school without that break. And also, the third option, which we, we mentioned as a potential on tonight, and again, is the phase replacement, complete replacement of these buildings here. So those are, again, sort of your, your primary options at this point. Yes?
I'm just digging back a little bit on those Suzanne questions, because there might be a misunderstanding that having the new buildings, if that's the way we happen to go, where they're situated somehow, still costs too much money to move HVAC and water and that sort of thing. And my understanding is that that's not the case, that you'll have dual systems that are more efficient and just having the buildings physically closer together would necessarily save us any money.
In that, in that particular scenario, if you were to go through the phase, the extraction, yes, you're correct, that would, those would be designed into play where you would not have the issues of not having hot water on the other side of the building, not having enough heat or cooling on the other side of the school. Those would be addressed in the process.
An advantage to having the two buildings closer, closer together from a utility standpoint is, when we look at a school or a commercial building, and we're keeping somebody up and running, we don't want to just design just one boiler for 100% of the load on the core state area. Ideally, we'd love to have two boilers sized at about 60%. So we've got some redundancy. If one of the boilers goes down, the other one can keep, keep the building at a certain temperature and keep it running. By building the buildings closer together, you could potentially have, we want them to have independent, independent plants. You know, basically, they can heat and cool themselves, run independently. But in the event that one was down, you could open up the valve and, and feed it the other way and keep the building from freezing. As soon as you freeze a building like this, all the places where everything, pipe comes in, gets heaved up, and things start, bad things start happening. So it's really, just like our homes, keeping them from freezing is, is a big deal. So yes, there are advantages to that.
I have a question about the K212 model. You, it was, is it, you were looking to have it be a project, be like a four-year project, is that, okay? So I'm just looking at option one from the, and in order to make this maybe financially more powerful, again, nobody knows what this is going to cost. The new elementary school would be a three-year project, and the middle school would be another three or four-year project, and the high school would be on top of that. So you stretch the whole thing out another 10 years, and that might, might, we knew what the numbers were, it might make it more powerful financially, just to sort of do, do financial modeling around something that looks like that. Versus, what, excuse me?
I made some notes on Mary Ann's, who was giving her comments, that to that very extent is maybe, and then working with Matt to see if, maybe that phase plan that we proposed in four years, stretch that out over a longer period of time, so that, excuse me, it works in this other bonding that you want to do for the town, like to do in the fire station proposal, or doing some sewer and, and street work.
Right.
And just making sure that there's a 20-year plan financially, so that when, if you're putting this up for a vote and trying to convince everybody, hey, vote for this, you can show a plan that's financially viable. It's actually a really great idea.
One thing I may add to that too is, South Portland was able to get state funding for that, which is typically, I'd say, highly unlikely, or understood that they would have a very challenging time getting that funding, but they did, and they are next in the neighborhood here. Granted, the application process for the state of main funding is closed, the last was open was 2016. But during, for instance, during this potential four-year period, at any point, that could reopen again. It's not, it's unknown when state of main is going to open up that application process again, or for new applications, for new projects. But between now and that 2024 and yon, during the process, if it opens up, you can still apply for all of those funds. And if another SRF funding opportunity comes up, you apply for that as well, as the, instead of waiting for, it's necessarily the process to happen, if you want to continue forward, the worst-case scenario is you prepare to take on the burden by yourself. But ideally, or hopefully, during that period, there would be an opportunity from the state of main that would open up another fund of revenue stream that could be used for that. Is, am I, is that close in ground?
But James, isn't it true, though, there's this ranking, and there's a scoring system that has to do with structural failures, and has to do with material and so forth? Just the sheer fact that if you look at the statistics of the amount of funds granted, the project is likely to be in the 5% range.
Right, and that's absolutely correct, but South Portland was also consolidating schools as well, which, where on the application process, on that check, there's definitely a lot of points that add application, where you already have two schools essentially combined together. But, and, and I agree, there's a very low probability, but you still need to do the due diligence of that application. You still have to try, because there, there could be a chance that it might happen.
I think you owe that to the taxpayers, to say, we've exhausted this possibility, and it's not possible.
Right, exactly, I didn't need to interrupt you.
No, no, it's okay. I'm saying, you might find in the next program, instead of just three, three schools getting huge chunks of money, maybe they spread it out over 12 schools, and it helps us bridge the gap. You know, that, you know, if we need an extra $5 million or $8 million to make the program work, maybe that's there, or it helps out in reducing the bond, bond debt from town.
Right, other revenue streams, or there's a, a long, high group of Capes with students who are looking forward and going and talking to your legislature. I think it was back in the 70s or the 60s when a lot of these schools were built, a lot of funding was granted to support the building of new schools, granted that's gone away. And now, we're looking at three out of 75 applications being accepted for major capital projects, but it's a new administration that can initially change.
Any other questions? We're going on. Okay, we do have another meeting scheduled for February 4th. That was the Dakin High School and Library. And I'd like to thank, Obie, you have given us a lot of information to think about, and I'm sure that we'll be all going home and pondering this for the next month. We'll get together, we have a lot to talk about. We may have a recommendation at the end of the next meeting, we may have to meet again, but keep talking, and that's okay. It's worth spending the time to get it right. Okay, so I would thank everybody for coming, and we will see you on the 4th.
Thank you.